No Mr. Mayor, there were no public comments received.
And there's no one from the public here, so with the unconfirmation we move on to closed session.
Release us.
We're ready to go. We'll come back into open session. Mr. Turp, can you give us a read out of closed session, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And members of the public still did need at 5:00 PM to discuss several pending items in closed session, including an update on JKB versus City of Ripon, a competition strategy update with regard to well three, and to discuss the regional services proposal that we won't be prepared to share much detail on until subsequent meetings. Staff was given direction to proceed, but no further reportable action was taken.
Thanks, Tom. With that, move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for the invitation.
Mr. Wheeler, would you like to start us off here?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consider stand. It's okay.
My name is Pastor Mark Van Dyke, and I am a Ripon resident and pastor of Ammon Valley, just about two blocks away from here. So would you join me in prayer? Hello, God. This whole world is in your hands. Our town is in your hands. Every person here, every person that you have made belongs to you, is in your hands. And we thank you, God, for all of the ways that we see we are in your hands, all the ways we see your faithfulness in our town. We are a prosperous, peaceful town, and we thank you for that blessing. God, we pray that there would be justice and peace in our town for all of the residents here. We pray that you would protect those who serve, particularly police officers and fire department. God, we ask that you would be near to them as they do what is often difficult, complicated work. We pray that you will be near to each of us residents of Ripon. God, we pray that this meeting would be productive and that you would give wisdom to the leaders of this town in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Lisa, can you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Tim Wheeler.
Here.
Leo Zuber.
Here.
Mike Rastusia.
Present.
Mayor Dean Uker.
Here.
Mayor Daniel DeGrasse.
Here. Okay, at this time, we will do a public discussion for items that are not on the agenda. So if there's anybody that would like to speak on items not on the agenda, you're welcome to come forward, name an address. If there's not, we will move on. Seeing none, we will go to approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting, July 13, 2021.
I'll move.
Okay, call for a vote here. Okay. Approval of the agenda. Oh, so we got to do, are we pulling things, anybody pulling anything off the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull item 1.1A.
1.1A. Okay. So approval of the agenda as amended.
Move. Second.
Approval of the consent calendar as amended.
I'll move.
Item 1.1A for Leo.
Well, my only question is the numbers for July of last year and July of this year. Last year, we were in the COVID situation. This year, we're still sort of there, but sort of not. Things are better, and yet we're $100,000 behind last year. Is there something about timing or something here?
Yeah, there's a couple of things going on. For one, I had the same question when I was looking at this. And the $380,000 we signed July 2020 was a very high number for July. And the years prior to that, it was on the order of $250,000. So that was a very high year. And then as far as the July numbers we get, those are calculated sales tax number we get. And then in August will be a true up. So August, and Lisa may have to correct me if I'm wrong, that is a true up of April through June of the preceding year. So that will be our first true up in this current fiscal year. So that's where they actually look at how much they gave you in the prior months and how much you actually earned.
So we'll have a better picture a month from now than we haven't. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll move to approve 1.1A.
Second.
Right, and that is the end of the consent calendar. At this time, we're going to ask Stephanie Hobbs to come into the front.
Emily, you can come closer to take a picture if you want.
No, you have to stay right in the back. Come on.
Just use your dad voice.
Well, I can do that. So I'll read a little bit of the whole thing, but it says, "We're asking Stephanie Hobbs to serve the City of Ripon Council of Governments, the Fire Committee since 2013 with dedication of distinction, where this is a service marked by outstanding participation in this committee, including the review and recognition of the 2016 Regional Transit System Plan and 2018 Regional Transit Plan Sustainable Community Strategy, and where she has volunteered in giving her time and effort on behalf of this community. And on behalf of the city of Ripon, we just want to thank you for your service. You are a very dedicated member of this community. You are always willing to give your time, and I appreciate it very much. So, thank you."
Now you have to use your mommy voice.
Thank you.
And thanks to all the family for coming out to support.
Appreciate it.
Also note that Kelly is the new member to serve in that position, so I'm making sure to spell it. It always makes me nervous. Now, you guys are welcome to go.
Have the crowds leaving. More than 90%.
All right, moving on then to item 2A, the resolution of the City Council directing staff in response to Governor Newsom's rescinding COVID restrictions on businesses. So with that, Mr. Zaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmembers. Just a little background. So during COVID-19, obviously, the City Council took several actions during that time to comply with state and San Joaquin County health orders while trying to lawfully provide every opportunity for local businesses to continue during this difficult time that we all faced. There is a whole summary of the actions the council took during that time. I won't go through all those. However, on June 11, 2021, the governor did issue an executive order that rescinded all restrictions on businesses and activities, including all aspects of the blueprint for a safer economy. With that, the staff has put together a resolution that's in front of City Council tonight. It finds that as of October 31, 2021, so giving a little bit of time to get into this, with the full reopening of the state economy pursuant to that order that was given on June 11, certain provisions of the Ripon Municipal Code 2.32, which is the emergency services section, will no longer be required to be implemented in order to mitigate these impacts of COVID-19. With that act, with that action, the temporary waiver of certain requirements of the Ripon Municipal Code allowing businesses to operate outdoors would expire as of October 31, 2021.
We're ready to go. We will come back into open session. Mr. Turp, can you give us a read out of closed session, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And members of the public still did need at 5:00 PM to discuss several pending items in closed session, including an update on JKB versus City of Ripon, a patient strategy update with regard to well three, and to discuss the regional services proposal that we won't be prepared to share much detail on until subsequent meetings. Staff was given direction to proceed, but no further reportable action was taken.
Thanks, Tom. With that, move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for the invitation.
Would you like to start us off here?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consider stand. It's okay. My name is Pastor Mark Van Dyke, and I am a Ripon resident and pastor of Ammon Valley, just about two blocks away from here. So would you join me in prayer? Hello, God. This whole world is in your hands. Our town is in your hands. Every person here, every person that you have made belongs to you is in your hands. And we thank you, God, for all of the ways that we see we are in your hands, all the ways we see your faithfulness in our town. We are a prosperous, peaceful town. And we thank you for that blessing. God, we pray that there would be justice and peace in our town for all of the residents here. We pray that you would protect those who serve, particularly police officers and fire department. God, we ask that you would be near to them as they do what is often difficult, complicated work. We pray that you will be near to each of us residents of Ripon. God, we pray that this meeting would be productive. And that you would give wisdom to the leaders of this town in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. Lisa, can you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Tim Wheeler.
Here.
Leo Zuber. Mike Rastusia.
President.
Mayor Dean Uker.
Here.
Mayor Daniel DeGrasse.
Here. Okay, at this time, we will do public discussion for items that are not on the agenda. So if there's anybody that would like to speak on items not on the agenda, you're welcome to come forward, name and address. If there's not, we will move on. Seeing none, we will go to approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting, July 13, 2021. Okay, call for a vote here. Okay. Approval of the agenda. Oh, so we got to do, are we pulling things? Anybody pull anything off the consent calendar?
I'd want, I'd like to pull item 1.1A.
1.1A. Okay. So approval of the agenda as amended.
Move second.
Approval of the consent calendar as amended.
I'll move.
Item 1.1A for Leo.
Well, my only question is the numbers for July of last year and July of this year. Last year, we were in the COVID situation. This year, we're still sort of there, but sort of not. Things are better. And yet, we're $100,000 behind last year. Is there something about timing or something here?
Yeah, there's a couple of things going on. For, for one, I had the same question when I was looking at this. And the $380,000 we saw July 2020 was a very high number for a July. And you're in the, the years prior to that, it was on the order of $250,000. So, so that was a very high year. And then as far as the July numbers we get, those are calculated sales tax number we get. And then in August will be a true up. So August and Lisa may have to correct me if I'm wrong, that is a true up of April through June of the preceding year. So that will be our first true up in this current fiscal year. So that's where they actually look at how much they gave you in the prior months and how much you actually earned.
So we'll have a better picture a month from now than we haven't. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll move to approve 1.1A.
Second.
Right. And that is the end of the consent calendar, which at this time, we're going to ask Stephanie Hobbs to come into the front.
Emily, you can come closer to take a picture if you want.
Just use your dead voice.
Well, I can do that. So I'll read a little bit of the whole thing, but it says, "We're asked Stephanie Hobbs to serve the city recognition of Sound and Council of Governments. The city committee since 2013 with dedication of distinction where the service of Mark by opportunity for participation in this committee, including the review and recommendation of the 2016 regional transit system plan and 2018 of the sustainable community strategy. And where should I take it? Give them the best of every time and effort on behalf of this community. And on behalf of the city of Ripon, we just want to thank you for your service. You are a very dedicated member of this community. You are always willing to give your time and I appreciate it very much. So, thank you."
Now you have to use your mommy voice.
Thank you. Thank you.
And thanks to all the family for coming out to support. Also note that Kelly is the new member to serve in that position, so. It always makes me nervous. Now, you guys are welcome to go.
Have the crowds leaving. More than 90%.
All right. Moving on then to item 2A, the resolution of the city council directing staff in response to government nuisance rescinding COVID restrictions on businesses. So with that, Mr. Zaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. Just a little background. So during COVID-19, obviously, the city council took several actions during that time to comply with state and San Joaquin County health orders while trying to lawfully provide every opportunity for local businesses to continue during this difficult time that we all faced. There is a whole summary of the actions the council took during that time. I won't go through all those. However, on June 11th, 2021, the governor did issue an executive order that rescinded all restrictions on businesses and activities, including all aspects of the blueprint for a safer economy. With that, the staff, staff has put together a resolution that's in front of city council tonight. Finds that as of October 31st, 2021, so giving a little bit of time to get into this. With the full reopening of the state economy pursuant to that order that was given on June 11th, certain provisions of the Ripon Municipal Code 2.32, which is the emergency services section, will no longer be required to be implemented in order to mitigate these impacts of COVID-19. With that act, with that action, the temporary waiver of certain requirements of the Ripon Municipal Code allowing businesses to operate outdoors would expire as of October 31st, 2021. So staff is recommending adoption of that resolution. It's also recommended the city council direct staff to notify all the businesses that applied for these temporary waivers of certain Ripon Municipal Code requirements to, to reach out to those businesses and let them know that the October 31st is the deadline to get back to normal operations. There are some sections in there in the staff report that I described of what, what some businesses were doing during the COVID-19 that the city allowed. And they are listed here in the, in the staff report. But with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions or comments?
So can I have a good question? Maybe this is more of a Tom question. So I remember we had multiple meetings about this to make sure that we follow the guidelines from the state and our county. When we put these emergency resolutions in place, following the guidance, did they automatically expire when the state changed theirs? In other words, with our emergency, do we have to actually, and not that we shouldn't, do we actually have to cancel it? Or does it automatically become canceled when the state changes their, whatever you call it, to take the emergency off? Do you know?
I'll let Tom chime in if he wants to on this, but my, yeah, my understanding is that when there is a state of emergency at the, at the state level and they declare that the council may take action to suspend certain sections of the municipal code and define which sections they've done that to. So it is necessary to take an action to actually put those back in place because the council has the ability to either put those in place or not during an emergency.
So it wasn't written to where it would automatically expire if the states expire. That's the question I'm asking.
And I don't remember. The state, I don't, they, they haven't rescinded the the emergency, like the state of emergency at the state level, but they have taken away the blueprint and letting businesses operate.
Okay.
I had explained it better than I, than that if I could, but I can't. That's, that's pretty much the state of affairs. We think this is a reasonable and prudent measure to take at this time.
Fully agree. I was just asking.
As I understand it, this state of emergency gave us the grounds to do what we did.
Right.
That's now gone, so we don't have any grounds to do what we did. We have, it's almost like we need to go back to what the rules were before.
Yeah, the state of emergency at the state level though is still in play in case they want to enact any future restrictions, I guess. So they haven't really removed that state of emergency, but they have removed all the restrictions that they had put in place.
In other words, but as I understand it, what he's done is left it in place so he can put the restrictions back in place if he wants to.
Correct.
You know, but right now, there are.
Now they're not. Yes.
That was better said than what I said.
One thing I want to address is that, you know, and I think Judith here talked about tonight is that, you know, when we send these orders, there's going to affect a lot of businesses and what they're currently doing with the outdoor restrictions or the dining and and a lot of the minor things. I believe that we need to address new ordinances or the changes to our current ordinances before the October 31st deadline to figure out what we want for outdoor dining and for use of parking spaces, everything that we allow during COVID time. The first thing. And the second thing is I think we need to be ready to put these back in place if the state locks down again, right? And as things are surging and things are happening and there's talk about shutting down certain sectors again and whatnot. So are we able easily to put these back in place if that were to happen?
This may be temporary, right?
Yeah, and I think we found during the last go around that we had, that when necessary, we can move quickly if we need to. And we did back, if you remember back in early 2020, we moved fairly quickly in that regard and tried to set up a balancing act whereby we were balancing the needs of business and the public health requirements that are being sent down to us. So I think we can, if we need to move quickly again, we'll be able to do that and be informed by the lessons of 2020 and, and even to the lesser extent, 2021.
That's it. To Tim's point, you know, there's certain things that we liked, we would probably need to, if we wanted to continue to do those things, they would need to be added not under a temporary emergency ordinance or just a, not enforcing of the ordinance, but actually make changes to our existing ordinances to allow for those changes. So it's a more permanent thing if we decide to move forward with, with those and council wants to go that direction versus having it only under an emergency situation. So I think that's basically what Tim was saying. And I think that's a good idea that we would move forward with addressing, you know, the things that you want to keep out of this rather than just, you know, know that by October 31st, we don't want to take it away and then a month later and say, okay, put it, put it back, whatever it's, if we can at least commit to a goal of getting in place what we want by October 31st, if we're going to rescind this at this point, that would be what I would, or how I would see it moving forward most efficiently.
Right.
And maybe there's nothing we want to keep that we've changed to, but.
I tend to be data-driven person. And it's fine, in my mind, it's fine to have seen some of the things that have been done. My mind, some of the things that we've seen being done, the structures and stuff are still there. I'm not sure that the things are still being done. So if we're going to consider changes to ordinances, we need some data from these businesses. In other words, what are they? Because let's assume that COVID went away tomorrow and we went back to the way we were a month February of 2020. Why would we want to change any of that? We weren't going to do it until COVID hit. So if somebody wants us to make a permanent change to what happened in March, we need some data, not just, I'd like to keep doing it because it was good for my, I'd like to see what that means. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So any other questions, comments from the council?
The only thing I, the only thing I would add is that I know parking's an issue, the structure is an issue. Some like it, some don't. We did an emergency thing. I think it was the right thing to do at the time. We did all kinds of things. But we're also taking a look at parking downtown. And we've started, there's a committee that's going to be put together for downtown parking analysis to figure out what can we do to make more parking, better parking, et cetera, et cetera. I think that's going to be a part of, maybe part of the data that helps drive, along with the data Leo's asking for, to help drive some of the decisions we make to do what we're going to do.
Yeah, I was just curious kind of what data, Leo, are you, from the businesses themselves, you're talking about like, I got, I got asking people what they think of it, or you're talking about actual money, like, you know, the revenue could be for outside.
Interested in what people think about it. I'm interested in the business side of it. How are you doing as a business in February of 2020? How are you doing as a business now? How many people are actually being served in these things that you have now versus before?
Yeah, yeah, it's anecdotal, you know.
Because if, like I said, if we were back in February of 2020 and somebody came in and asked to take over parking spaces downtown, I'll tell you what the answer would have been. No. That would have been the end of the discussion. The only reason that got put out there is because of COVID.
Yeah, maybe that's a good thing. You know, there's things that happen and, you know, maybe that's a driver to what this could be good for the downtown district.
And I want to see. I'm, I'm.
You're asking businesses to open their books?
People.
No, I'm wondering what you, what we, what you're asking for.
I want, I'm tired of people saying it was good for business. What does good for business mean?
What does it mean to you?
I don't know.
Just trying to figure out what you, what you're asking for.
I would, okay. How many people were you serving on a net, sort of a basis? And I don't need a pile of books this tall. I trust people to be honest with what they're saying. So how many people were you serving the month or two before this whole mess started? How many are you serving now? If you went to outdoor dining, how many people were served six months ago? How many of people are being served now? That's the kind of thing I want to know. It's nice to see these things. It's nice to hear that they're good for business. I want to know that it is. The other thing I would point out, this October 31st date could be problematic because what's today? August, September? If we introduced a change to an ordinance tonight, it would not go into effect until November.
Barring a special meeting.
Right. So we're looking at a gap, no matter how we look at this.
Well, we're going to have to urgency ordinance it again and then bookend it with the, with the regular.
People want us to consider those. They need to get on it now. Get information to Mr. Werner so he can talk to Tom and they can figure out what kind of a process we need to go through to deal with this.
Well, I mean, it doesn't have to be. Make a recommendation that it is November or December too, I suppose, right? It doesn't have to be.
No, as I say, but.
October 31st was chosen because it falls in line with the current outdoor dynamic ordinance. And that's that's when those, anything in the street would normally be required to be put away. So, but I think even if you'd said, okay, it's October 31st, there would still be, you're not going to go out there on October 31st and make sure things would be gone that day if we were working on making changes to it. You would.
But I wouldn't want to know that we were going to wait till December 31st to do something about it.
I agree. So I know it, it, as we make a motion or whatever we decide to do to change the date, that's fine.
Does this still need to go through the first reading, second reading and all that stuff too, just like you normally would? Or is this?
Not this.
To make changes, if you want to make things perfect or like.
No, that I know, but this is, this is. Okay.
Yeah. So the, so the resolution for you, nice to get back to normal business operations for everything. You guys are choosing one aspect of that and wanting to, so that would be something we could bring back next month. That would be an amendment to an ordinance if you guys so chose to, to make some changes to that or go down that path. Well, what's a funny, nice to get back to, to norm, like a setting a date to get back to normal business operations for everything? Because if you look at the list, it's in, in the staff report here, it's more than just downtown dining. There's a few other things. There's not just downtown, there's other dining areas in town where there's parking spaces taken up or structures that were put up that don't necessarily meet building code or would not meet structural code because of, we were trying to help businesses just operate during that time. There's also some parking spaces being reserved in the downtown because people couldn't come into businesses and they were doing drop offs. So those are the things that we are saying are coming to an end at some point as you choose in this resolution. You can choose the October 31st date or shift that out if you want. It's up to council. We're just looking for some direction on that.
I have a question. Tom, what about emergency ordinances? Aren't they in effect as soon as they're adopted?
Yeah, let's, let's separate urgency. Sorry, am I muted again? Okay. Separate urgency from emergency ordinances. Emergency ordinances can take effect immediately. Urgency ordinances can as well. There's a little bit different process for enactment. But yeah, they, they both would generally go into effect right away.
Okay, so there is a way to shorten that 60-day or 90-day process?
Uh, yeah. And again, like I said before, we would, we would adopt them as an urgency ordinance and then we would bookend them with a regular ordinance procedure. So we would follow the, the standard procedure, just it would trail the urgency ordinance procedure. And then anybody who says you really didn't have an urgency, well, that's fine. By the time anybody got to the courthouse, we'd already have adopted it by regular me.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, thanks.
I can be an optimist or pessimist. This may all change on September 15th.
You never know. So the additional comments from the council? Can we look like yes or no?
I'm just going to say, it's going to be, you're going to be hard pressed to get, you know, as a restaurant owner myself, we don't keep data on who eats outside, inside. So, you know, just, you know, or any business, I don't believe, you know, kept that data. So it's going to be hard to get hard numbers to kind of discern what, you know, if businesses are thriving because of the rules that have been allowed or not. So I'm just concerned that, you know, if, I think we need to think more, what's long-term best for the city, you know, rather than just the data of the businesses that have operated during COVID and had these rules relaxed.
Well, I somewhat, I don't know if disagree is the right word, but I think that's wandering off track. Because if you're going to, sometimes when you talk about what's good for a business, it may not necessarily be what's good for the city. And yet it is something that you decide to do. And vice versa, sometimes you want to do something that's good for the city and it doesn't positively impact businesses and you change it. The only way you can make the right decision in those instances is to have information from both sides. In my mind, business people can come up with information about their business. I'm not looking, like I said, for notarized, signed off, validated 13 ways to Sunday information about a business. But they should be able to characterize and to, I don't know, put into some sort of numbers to give us an idea of the impact that this, rather than just say, what's going to ruin my business? What does that mean? They ought to be able to paint a picture. Does that make sense?
Okay. Yeah. Any further comments?
No. Having said that, I would move that we adopt the resolution, but we change the date to November 30th.
Can we give members of the public?
You can do whatever you want. You're the mayor.
So is anybody that would like to speak on the issue in the public? Please come forward and state name and address and yeah, have at it.
Hello, Jennifer Komatsu, 303 West Main Street. And I know you guys got my letter. So from a personal standpoint, from a business standpoint, that's my position on having our downtown dining area take up some of the parking spaces. I want to do say that the council and the city did work fabulously to get us going again during COVID because it was very, very difficult for all of us business owners to be able to do business this last year. And I don't think that we've seen the end of it. I think we're still going to be in it, even though something may have been lifted. I think we're still, it's hard to get employees, it's hard to get people that feel safe to go into restaurants and people are wearing masks again. So I think we're going to have that come up again as the, what is it, the Delta variant or whatever that's out there now is freaking people out. So they may not want to go inside and they want to have that opportunity to go outside. So I think there's a lot of things to consider when we're saying, okay, we're just going to cut it off at, you know, when the October 31st event is. And I'm not quite sure because I know that when we got the original ordinance approved, it was from May to October. And what was the basis of having it for those months there to be able to do outside dining? And how would that differ if we extended it for the whole year? So when you look at saying, well, what did the numbers show? Well, and Judith's position, she's new business. She started in COVID, basically. So her numbers aren't going to show what she did the year before, the year before that. She's trying to survive out there. I don't want to see businesses come in and out of downtown Ripon like they have been. I want our community to thrive and enjoy being out in the downtown area. I have a lot of people from outside the area that come in and love Ripon. They feel it's safe. They want to continue to support businesses here. And when we keep having businesses go in and out because of financial restraint, I think it's a really detriment to our city and to our clients and customers. So I don't know what the basis was that you guys decided from May to October that we could do outside dining. And how would that change if we extended that for the whole year?
I don't know.
October date was the way the ordinance was written in the first place.
Right.
And it in October, and we just said for the period that you could be out there, we're going to relax the rules and let you go out there, but we didn't extend it past that date.
No, I, I, I agree with that, Leo, but I'm asking you.
Why was that?
Why was that date set up to begin with? And so.
Discussion with the businesses and they felt that that was okay date because after that date it got cold. Trust me. I remember, I was in this room when we did it. So it was part of that. But let me also mention something too. You're conflating a few different things, Jennifer. You're talking about outdoor dining versus parking. Those are two separate issues because you keep talking about outside dining. We're not saying you can't dine outside. But let me ask a question because I don't want to get into the back and forth. Let me ask a question. So, so I'm going to take a different approach here. What would be, because I understand what we talked about, it may go back into place. It's possibly a can. We don't know. How long can the emergency, Tom, how long can his emergency stay in place? And can we wait until the emergency is over? And can we wait until the emergency is over? Yes, he can put it in the next day again, but I hate to go back and forth, you know, we're gonna go back to the old ordinance. Oh, by the way, you know, you can go out there and do it again. I mean, that could be that that could be a worse thing than saying, let's wait till the emergency ordinance is over from the state. Can he keep it going forever? Or does he have to do something with it?
An emergency ordinance stays in effect for the duration of the emergency, the declared emergency. So.
So he can say the emergency lasts for the next 20 years if everybody gets the flu every year.
Well, you know, obviously, there are going to be a lot of pressure to not call to to declare victory and say the emergency is over, right? To that, that's that's been the ongoing public debate. So from a municipal level, that's the that's the textbook answer. When the emergency ceases to exist, the ordinance is it goes out of goes out of is no longer effective and would need to go through a regular process if they were to reinstitute it.
I would assume that if the CDC came out and said that at this point, there is enough evidence for us to declare that COVID-19 effect on the population is no more of a problem than the flu. The emergency is gone. Because.
That's right.
Yep. But until somebody else defines the COVID situation as under control, governor can keep that emergency order in place as long as he wants.
So then I guess.
The basis for it.
So I guess really my question is for because it doesn't really affect me for doing outside dining. I'm really promoting for the future of downtown area and for Judith that if she had to take down her platform because of the current ordinance, financially, she would not be able to put it back up. And if we went back into an emergency order, she would have, which would probably be no indoor dining again like it was last year. She would have no source of revenue and she can't. I mean, it's very costly. I think she put that in her paperwork, how much it costs. And these small businesses, we can't throw out that kind of money and wait for the return for months and months and months to do that. So that's my concern for you guys as a council is would we want to do that to our small businesses? And I know I know we only have really one that we're talking about up here. I realize that, but it's kind of the staple of our downtown right now that we're dealing with.
Let me, and that's a good point. Can I ask a question? Can we can we modify this up? Because I know there's four spaces now. Can we leave something in place for now? But require only two spaces can be because I get the other side of this where a lot of people complaining about a lot of parking spots taken up. So I mean, we get both sides and you probably hear both sides, too. But can we modify it a little bit the where maybe we'll allow it temporarily again until something else happens, but maybe two spots have to be made available for parking. Is there some way that we can?
Well, and I will respond to the letter. I'm assuming you're talking about the email that was sent to all of us. Because that email, for me, the problem was exactly what I was trying to convey to Mr. Wheeler. There was not a lot of data type information in there as to what the impact was and what the the impact of having it versus not having it would be. There wasn't. There was information about how much it cost and all this stuff, but I could not put together the impact of that particular thing on her business. Other than she thought it was a good idea. Well, I gotta have a little more than that. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand that. And maybe, and I'm Judith will have to speak for herself, but because she was a new business, maybe she didn't have those numbers as if you went to me, I can tell you, okay, and this year I produced this much. And as a result of being shut down and not doing any services for 10 weeks, I lost this amount of money. I could do that because I had the business going. Judith just came into it as COVID and took over and purchased a business. So that's why I think she struggles with getting her numbers, but she needs to talk to you about that. But I could show you my numbers.
But in all due respect, I bought businesses before and I've always gone back and took a look at operating expenses before I bought it. So I knew what I was getting into. So somebody had a look at those operating expenses before we bought, I would think.
And it doesn't have to be a guessing game. You're absolutely right. It could be a conversation. There's there's nothing wrong with that. I'm just telling you what the problem for me was with the email.
Any other questions for me?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to have a back and forth and make you answer. But you feel like you're on the hot seat up here, but.
It's okay. I'm used to it.
But can we compromise a little bit, a few more parking spaces? But can we modify this thing a little bit temporarily?
Well, we.
I don't know.
We can certainly make that decision from our perspective.
I don't know if you gotta go through.
So why we should.
I mean, would you guys like to speak or?
Thank you so much, and I really appreciate you guys taking consideration into this and for everything you do for our downtown and for our city.
Good evening, council members. My name is Judith Palenzuela. My address is 377 Robertson Drive, Ripon. And I have Scott with me, who is also.
Best customer.
My best customer who offered to come and talk to me. And to your point, Mr. Secondberg, I provided numbers of what I have as of July of last year, what the revenue was before we were allowed to put the parklet and what July of this year's was and the revenue increased about 500%. Or employee, we went from two, actually, at that point, we were four to 10 employees right now. And I think we are creating revenue. So it's not as detailed as it will be as if I see if I had the history as Jennifer mentioned. But I provide some high level numbers. So.
Can I ask you a question?
First.
So when you got in there, did any, and again, I'm just asking questions to get some information. Did anybody ever notify you that that was a temporary situation out there that there was an ordinance that allowed it? The outside dining, but at some points going away. Did you understand that or was that never presented to you?
I understood that, but at the same time, I mean, it was mentioned to us, but at the same time, we were hearing from the news that COVID will go until 2022, right? It's like, and right now we have the Delta variants and we don't know what's gonna happen to it. So and we are in downtown Ripon. And as I mentioned in my letter, the winds that we get sometimes is 100 miles per hour. We had umbrellas when we started and the umbrellas will fly over and will fly over the patio. So it's a liability for a business that I wanted to avoid by having a fit structure. So if that means anything.
I love the outside dining, but but I understand we get from the other side, too, that people want to park. So we're kind of caught in the middle there. And I understand being a small business about costs and all that. So I get it. I mean, trust me, I do. I'm just wondering if there's some compromise in the short run because at some point the ordinance will go away or we're gonna need all the parks. So I'm just trying to figure out some sort of way in the middle that we can kind of help out a little bit. But everybody that wants more parking is really upset because they look at it as a short term compromise. That's all I'm trying to get to. I don't know what the answer is.
Can I speak?
Yeah.
I need to give you my address and all that or? Scott Ferguson, 1570 Riverview Circle East. That's in Ripon. Yeah, I've lived here about three years now, coming from San Diego. And when I first was looking for a place to settle down, I never heard of Ripon. Yet a lot of people said this was the place to be and it really has been. And during that course, my wife and I have developed a relationship with Judith and it is quite a nice spot to go to. The thing is, I've heard the parking become an issue. And what's interesting for me is, like I said, I'm probably one of her better customers. And the whole time that I've gone there, there's only once where I actually had to park in the back. I never, I was always able to park right there, either in front across the street. So really, like I said, from my perspective, it hasn't been an issue. But I will say it's just really a nice atmosphere, the the outdoor dining. I don't know where it's gonna go after COVID. But if I had to say it'd be nice to, you know, keep either a portion of it or something to that effect. Thanks.
I've been here 33 years and it's always been a parking problem. Yes.
And I moved to San Diego in LA.
Yeah. I think parking is a commonality or a common issue among growing cities, right? So.
I'm just looking to see if there's some way in the middle we can do on a temporary basis to help out and.
Well, I think my, if we extend it some more, we can have a conversation and still have time to do something about it. I'd rather do that than.
Correct.
Do it on the fly tonight.
Yeah. And if you extend it a little bit further, that's fine. If you get close to that point and you say, hey, we need to make changes. Then move the deadline again and figure it out from there. But
Exactly.
It sets us up and really forces us to have to address the issues to make what we want to keep permanent, permanent and things that we, if you don't want to keep it, then at least you set some sunset period that's far enough out in the future that people can deal with it and not just be cut short on or say, hey, you gotta stop today.
Well, I just think it's the right thing to do.
Yeah.
Any other questions for me? All right. Thank you.
Anybody else?
What time's lunch?
Well, I have brought you sandwiches, guys. I don't know if you got a portion of it.
And they appreciate it.
Already.
They appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Say my name and address, right? Name is Gabriel Hada. My address is 104 East Main Street. Yeah. Um, I have a business right across the street from her. And the stuff that I say, I really don't, I really not trying to be mean or anything like that. This is through my point of view and my advantage of being literally across the street. My business hours are from eight o'clock to six o'clock in in general. Like just last Saturday, the Barnwood had a class, a that takes, I think, three hours, four hours. The whole side of of the like street was just packed before I got I got in at seven o'clock. So that whole side was done parking. And then the other side, there's only like, I think, three now or six parking spaces. And it's like, well, now parking is a bigger issue now. Like her business doesn't open up until like later on. But that structure is always there. That's how I see. It's always there. It's taking up parking. My customers have told me they drive around. And if they don't find a parking, they'll come back. And sometimes that's not good for me because I will have a slow day and that. And those two people who tell me that, I could have used those two people on that day. And it's it's really, I understand why she did it and I understand why you guys did it, too, but it is just on on other on other businesses backs, when does it stop? Because I feel like I had to give up something from my business so so her business can go on. And I just, I just don't get it. I don't. It's like someone would have to really tell me facts about why should my business kind of get deemed a little bit for someone else's business to prosper? I don't think that's right. So and I see it like the 57 hours a week that I spend in my barber shop. I see sometimes she has a ton of people and sometimes she does it for like just this is what this is what I see on a daily basis. So.
Any questions or comments?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Would anyone else like to speak? Name and address. I think we know who you are, though.
Name is Dr. Debbie Daniels. I own Ripon Veterinary Hospital and I'm also the president of our Ripon Chamber of Commerce. And I love Judith. However, I don't think the city should favor one business over others. We already have a dire parking situation downtown. We've lost a business. The jewelry store is leaving due to inadequate parking. Like the barber, my clients tell me, I'm sorry I'm late, but I had to drive around and around to try to find a parking place. And your own consultants have identified that we're lacking what 161 parking spaces. And like Daniel, you yourself have said, if COVID never happened, this wouldn't be an issue whatsoever. And if Judith has to take down her structure, she's no worse off than she was in the beginning. And it shouldn't be that detrimental to her business. I don't personally see that many people dining in her structure. And that whole time is there, there's, it's taking up parking. Other people cannot park there. And that block in particular is a tough place to find a parking place. Essentially, she's had the city give her about 600 square feet of additional business property. Well, if you're gonna do that for her, can you do that for me? And I just think if COVID restrictions are going away, we have to look at letting that go away as well and letting everybody have adequate parking. We do have our parking committee that we are working on because it is an issue and we're not gonna ignore that. And hopefully we can eventually find success. I don't think it'll be in the short term, but if it's in the long term, then good. But with the COVID restrictions going away, I think we need to get back to business as usual and not favor one over the others. Thank you.
Doc, can I ask you a question? So who calls a meeting for, because I'm on that committee and I don't know who who's gonna call that meeting? And when are we gonna have it? Because I'm because Leo's looking for some facts and I agree with the data. Can we call one like right away? We can get together and come up with some.
You know.
As a team, as a team, we can get together and come up with some recommendation to the council and bring this back.
This just came out of the last Economic Development Committee meeting and we decided to make this committee a subcommittee of that entity. And we had a little brief meeting Kelly and Daniel and I the other day. And I think we've kind of figured out who we'd like to be on this committee. We have not scheduled a first meeting date. But if Daniel or and you and Kelly and I want to figure out a date, yeah, I'm ready to go. I think we need to talk to the consultants, see if they have any ideas. We need to look at financing. I know that Lowdi put in a parking structure. They got federal money to do it. And we need to start doing our homework. We need to start doing our homework. Even if.
I've got some, I've got some thoughts and ideas, but at least it'll bring back some data to us. Maybe we have an emergency meeting a week or two from now. I don't know, but I think that's gonna be part of it.
Yeah, no, you know, I'm fine with dining on the sidewalk, but taking up our precious parking is another issue.
Well, I think we've exhausted it unless Kelly has something to say. Okay. I was just making a point. You're the last one in the crowd to speak. We have another one in the back if you would like to speak, too. Do you have any? Okay. With that, is there any any action the council would like to take at this moment?
We'll go back to my original motion that we adopt the resolution, but move the effective date back to November 30th and start doing some homework.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. Let's call a vote here.
Oh, I gotta make this official.
And then we'll all get together.
There we have it. Let's see, item 3A, discussion about sending a letter to our congressman.
Yes.
Mr. Estes.
I should back up when I read this. So speaking of COVID, nobody's gonna shoot at me. You guys may kick me. Speaking of COVID and the problems that we're having, I want to read what I put together based on some research that I've done. And I think people need to answer some questions for us. I recommend we send a letter to Congressman Hardy to explain his position concerning infected individuals coming across our southern border. And I'm gonna use terms that are off the news reports that I got, so bear with the terms because this is off. It's a page and a half. I want to discuss the issue. I was raised and I've always told you the part of the problem or you're part of the solution. For this discussion, I want to concentrate on COVID-19 virus, not the illegal entry, the rapes, the murders, the human trafficking on August 6th, shooting 20 rounds at Border Patrol or the massive number of illegal drugs coming across the border, killing Americans, just the COVID. Let's look at some facts and these all come from newspaper articles and NBC, not off of certain TV stations, people would say. The number of illegal immigrants apprehended after crossing into the United States from Mexico soared 200,000 in July alone, the exact opposite of the usual seasonal trend according to preliminary numbers from US authorities. Besides coming in at the highest total encounter number since fiscal year 2000, preliminary data indicated a record number of unaccompanied minors or illegal immigrant children who arrived without an adult across the border in July, as well as the second highest number of family units ever. As President Biden, his CDC and other officials in the administration continue to push for more restrictions on American citizens in response to the Delta variant of the Wuhan coronavirus, they turn a blind eye to the growing public health threat posed by COVID-positive illegal immigrants since July 26th. 18% of families leaving ICE custody tested positive. A leaked presidential briefing documented reported on NBC News revealed that 20% of unaccompanied migrant children who illegally cross the border are testing positive for COVID-19 after being released in communities by Border Patrol. The report covers the last two or three weeks of data prepared for President Joe Biden, NBC says. Southwest states such as Texas are now seeing a surge in the southwest Lambda variant of the Wuhan coronavirus in their communities. Cases of Wuhan coronavirus are exploding to the tune of 900% increase since the CBP's Rio Grande Valley sector because illegal immigrants aren't all being tested by the federal government, whose officials are putting them on buses and planes to destinations around the country. A question was asked at a news conference of the White House. Why is it that the federal government is asking vaccinated Americans to wear masks to stop spread COVID? But at the same time, federal agents are also requiring at least COVID-19 positive border crosses into small towns in Texas and then of course shipped throughout the country. The answer was not logical. That's why we're recommending wearing masks and getting vaccinated. That's a great answer. 30% of crossing the border refused COVID vaccine in Texas border city of McAllen says more than 7,000 COVID-positive migrants have been released into the city since February and more than 1,500 in the past week. The latest example of growing concern about the potential impact of the border crisis on efforts to control COVID-19 in the US. The stunning numbers come amid increasing concerns from Texas and elsewhere about the potential impact of the massive numbers of migrants coming to the border on the efforts to control the 19 pandemic within the United States. Ironically, the CDC still requires unvaccinated Americans coming back from Mexico to quarantine for seven days, something illegal immigrants traveling from Mexico are clearly not doing. Is that me? Thought my time was up. With detained illegal immigrants being shipped to cities all over the country, it puts all Americans at risk for spiking COVID cases, illnesses and death. Biden's Attorney General Merrick Garland sued on Friday to get a restraining order against enforcement by Abbott policy and all he's trying to do is protect people in this country. Four agents are hospitalized for coronavirus, including two on respirators, US Customs and Border Protection Agency says. The agency that oversees the Border Patrol has 9,000 COVID-19 cases among its employees, including 32 deaths. At least 125,000 fully vaccinated Americans have tested positive for COVID and 14 of those have died according to data collected by NBC News. Our own government is bringing in infected people, spreading them throughout the country and infecting Americans. This should make every thinking person mad as hell. DHS Secretary Alejandro Mayorkas told senators during a recent congressional hearing that federal officials do not always notify local jurisdictions before releasing legal immigrants who may have the deadly infection. We need to understand our congressman's stance on the super-spreader of this virus. Again, you're either part of the problem or you're part of the solution. I think as elected people, it's our responsibility to ask and get answers. Since we all care about the safety and welfare of our people we represent as elected individuals, we need to ask our employee Congressman Harder questions such as, and not limited to. And I came up with questions. We can modify this, change it, add, delete, whatever the council wants to do. What date did you visit the border in McAllen, Texas and what did you experience? What day did you visit the border between California, Mexico and what did you experience? What did the Customs and Border Patrol explain to you when you had that important discussion with them to better understand what's happening at the border? So you are informed to protect the American people you represent before any vote? Have you drafted any legislation to protect the American people from the deadly disease? If so, what's the bill number? When will this bill be discussed on the House floor and do you have any cosponsors? This is, since this is important and lives at stake, we need to reject any standard computer generated. Thank you for your letter. It's very important to us. We're gonna do everything we can in our power to get back to you. So COVID's a problem. This administrator is expediting the problem and telling us to wear masks and do some things beyond what we should be doing. So I think we need to, since Harder is in Congress and represents this, I think we need to ask some questions. I think, you know, and when I get asked a question from the public, I have to answer. I can't just hide someplace. So I think we need to ask some questions. She's in a district now, apparently they're on recess. And this should take about a week to put together because you look back at your calendar and figure out when you were somewhere you weren't. I think that we need to ask the questions to see what our representative is doing to protect the American people. That's his job, just like we have a job. So that's what I'm recommending. So I'm taking, and I think the thing said for Kevin to draft a letter, but I think it could be me, Kevin, Kevin, Leo. I don't care who drafts it. I just think we need to send a letter and ask for a response and we'll read the response in next month's meeting. That's my recommendation.
If you get a response, and I would add that in general, we should maybe be having more regular pointed questions asked to the congressman and expect a response because the communication from their office has been lacking, to say the least. So I think this isn't the only letter which is probably right. Any other thoughts, questions, comments, motions?
I have one comment. I tend to think that our role ought to be more focused on questions about things relative to Ripon. And I realize you can make anything you want relative to Ripon, but I would much rather like to know what Congressman Harder is doing about this infrastructure bill that could represent significant amount of money for this town and it's just sitting in Washington than what he saw when he went to the border in Texas or the border in Southern California. If you want to write the letter, that's, that's fine. I have a little bit of an issue taking city time to deal with something like that, our staff time. But personally, I'd rather, like, I'd rather know what the heck is going on with this infrastructure bill because that means money for us, things that we can use it to improve this community.
I don't disagree, but nobody wanted to put that on the agenda to talk about it. I don't disagree. We shouldn't do it. But I got 16,000 people that may get COVID because I don't know what's going, going down at the border and he's letting people pass and we're not being notified.
You're giving him way more credit than he deserves.
To Harder?
Yes. Way more credit than he deserves.
That's why I'm asking questions. I want to know. I mean, we don't know if people are being dropped off here COVID positive and we never will know.
He might not either.
Well, that's his job. You ought to find out. I'm just not gonna sit around and do nothing. We've got 16,000 people we're representing and we probably should have sent another letter about the, the infrastructure. That's important as well. This one's important to me. We just talked about it tonight. This is very important to me and you know how I get when I get passionate about stuff. And I think we need to ask that question and maybe we need to draft another letter about infrastructure. I mean, we could probably spend all day asking questions.
Have you approached his office, just yourself correctly?
Have what?
Have you approached his office, just you?
Oh, no, of course not. We sent a letter one time. I sent a letter one time and I got this nice. Thank you for contacting the office. We'll get back to you shortly.
I got one of those. I didn't even ask a question before. Probably for you. Yeah. Well, maybe we narrow, you know, narrow down the verbiage and ask multiple questions in a.
I don't care. I want to know what he's doing on COVID. We got a COVID problem. We're being told.
The longer you make the letter, the less likely you're gonna get an answer. You can't say what you just said in three quarters of a page or less, you're gonna get, we'll get back to you when we can.
Well, I'm not, we're not gonna put this in the letter. The questions will go on the letter. I'm doing that as background for you all that may not know the facts. That's why I read the letter. Very simple. Here's the question you have, Mr. Hardy. Can you please answer these questions? And if you want to throw in infrastructure, that's fine too.
Would anybody like to, do we need a motion to direct staff to do this? If you're gonna correct it, okay, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. It'll take Kevin and I five minutes to put this together.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
And if there are other questions, I mean, you want us to include a question about infrastructure? Well, should we draft a second letter?
It's not on the agenda. Just get this over with and let's move on.
Well, then maybe you ought to put it on next.
Discussion for another time. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, honorable city council members of the public, I just have one item to discuss. And it's actually a reminder that we're still accepting applications for our community police academy through August 20th. We have about half the places, replacements filled with community members and we're looking for the other half. So you can go on our webpage at riponpd.org and fill out the application.
Thank you. That was an excellent program, by the way.
It is. Okay. Again.
Just a quick update. We do not have a planning commission meeting next Monday this month, so. It's an update for you guys.
We like those updates.
Yeah, real quick. I just wanted to update the council on our water uses for June. June, we were 16% below our 2013 baseline year. July, we were 19% below that 2013 baseline year and our 12-month running averages right at 16%. Our water conservation coordinator is active and then through the rest of this month, our public works is gonna be spending some additional time getting out there and doing some more water conservation, observation and enforcement. So.
Elizabeth.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I provided you with the updated project list with Stockton Avenue just being a little bit more itemized just to show where we're at. The meteoric can be they're working on right now is the installation of the storm drain and finishing installation of the industrial sewer on East Forest Street. And we also, for the well 19 pump station, that's advertised right now, so it'll be bidding later this month.
On the Stockton Street, there's not, it seemed like a whole lot of dust control and sediment control measures may be in place. And maybe I didn't want to make a muddy road by watering it, but there's quite a bit of sand traveling up and down the roads and maybe they could get a street sweeper out there or something for some of that.
We're gonna work on that a little bit more. The reason why they're watering it is because they've removed the asphalt and so they can't really street sweep the dirt.
Yeah, just like.
I understand there's still sections.
That's the overpass. Yeah, it's starting to drag quite a bit of dirt up there, but and, you know.
Understood. Thank you.
A lot of, lot of dust out there.
Comments from businesses on that part about dust control during the day. So if they can get a water truck moving a little bit, I think it would.
It's, it's gonna be tough. I'm gonna be that way for a long time on that.
And it's gonna get worse too.
Yeah, we are asking anybody to not use Stockton Avenue unless it's business related.
Yeah. Mr. Turpstra.
You're on mute.
I'm mute, but I think he said no report.
Yeah, no, no report this evening. Thank you.
All right. Kevin, anything for us?
Nothing to report.
Excellent.
Nothing to report.
Oh, come on. Nothing?
Leo? Well, I was gonna thank everybody, but I know that I have nothing to report.
Mike?
Yeah, I want to talk about the infrastructure bill. National Night Out was very nice. Please tell Liz she did an excellent job. If Lieutenant Sowers ever needs a second job, he's a heck of a batter. I mean, I don't know how he wasn't sore the next day, but she did a really good job. Please, I've already told you, but please pass it on. I think you guys did a really nice job.
And the mayor did one heck of a job in the dunk.
He did.
That was a difficult job.
He went under so nicely.
I was impressed.
I was working on my splashes. Thank you.
He could have been in the Olympics.
Okay, well, yeah, thank you to all of you for being here and everyone else who was here. Anyone who happened to listen online, thank you. Appreciate and value your input, so thanks for that. National Night Out was a big success, I think. So more hot dogs next year, maybe. But no, it was a lot of fun, very nice event. Had lots of people commenting on how nice it was to have that and nice work by everybody there. I wasn't real thrilled when they announced, hey, the mayor's in the dunk taking, the entire crowd came to throw balls.
The line went clear around to the baseball.
I don't know what's going on there, but hey, that's all right. You got a couple of years before election season, so maybe we can work on that. But with that, thank you all. Meeting adjourned.